For the flag pledge, calling the meeting to order.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Well, that flag is really on. It's always off. A couple of minutes.
All right, agenda. Everyone happy with the agenda?
I am moved that we approved the agenda. I'll second that.
The motion Eugene moved to approve the agenda and Mike seconded it. All in favor of approving the agenda, say aye. Agenda approved. Approval of minutes, October nineteenth, twenty twenty three.
Motion to approve.
Louis made the motion to approve the minutes and Lynn seconded it. All in favor of approving the minutes, say aye. Minutes approved. Updates.
You're on.
We haven't had a meeting in a month.
I don't remember what it was.
Do you want to do that then?
Sure.
County board.
County board, we did approve the Campbell sand operation last meeting with a discussion. Yeah, that was good. Absolutely.
All right. Petitions. Docket PC twelve twenty-one, twenty-three oh one. Consider the petition of Jill Bear, Kevin Bear, and William Bear joint trust for a farm winery, including a wedding facility in accordance with the zoning ordinance. Aaron, you're up, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
First time presenting to the planning commission, so bear with me. I presented to the board of adjustment previously, wandered a little bit away from the podium, have not presented from podiums in my prior presentation counties, but let's jump into it. As you said, the applicants here are Jill Bear on behalf of Jill and Kevin Bear and William and Barbara Bear joint trusts, and they are requesting a conditional use permit to operate a farm winery to include some other onsite events such as wine tasting and a wedding facility. They've indicated the construction of this facility would be phased and it would occur over about a ten-year period. And that all of the activities that you are considering here tonight would take place within a seventeen-acre area that is comprised of two, the entirety of one parcel and a portion of another parcel. There will be some work for the board to do tonight. There's several pathways that this request could come forward through the ordinance. They ha- they are the agricultural oriented business. That's a business that uses grain or feed sales, general repair and installation services, or custom meat processing. And notice that it says such as, so that should not be read as a comprehensive list. Then there's other similar use, other uses similar to those listed as permitted and conditional. So that's really anything you think is similar to the uses that are already enumerated in the ordinance. And then finally, we have the wine tasting facility that would represent one portion of what they're requesting to do. The applicants were in touch with staff and staff provided them with some opinions as to what the appropriate citation would be to bring this forward. Ultimately, the applicants choose what they apply for. Ultimately, the board determines that the application is correctly submitted or incorrectly submitted, and staff provide support to the board. So in this case, they've cited all three of those uses, and it could be considered under all three of them or in under any combination thereof. This is a map of the area that shows the zoning. And you'll see the CUP boundary area there highlighted in purple. And then we've got a giant sea of green surrounding that. That's the Agricultural Resource Protection zoning district. And with just a sliver just to the east of the CUP boundary area of the community development zoning district, and that is the downtown Fremont, so to speak, you're seeing there. There's no applicable overlay districts in this case, and they are proposing access from county road twenty-nine. So if you look at the site characteristics, as I said, the request covers area that is within two tax parcels. This is the first. This is approximately a five and a half acre parcel. This is owned by Kevin and Jill. On it is this existing school. And there's also a history with this this parcel and the zoning office and not permitting of structures or activities, but of solid waste, junk and salvage violations. We'll have some more information on that later.
Correct, though, but it's not. It was from a previous owner.
Correct. Previous owners, and we'll have some pictures of what it looked like, you know, prior to their ownership. And I believe there's a photo of the site while they've owned it. You may notice an improvement. I did the site visit myself, and I noticed a significant improvement from what I've seen in the photos in the past. Also, when the town board was asked to weigh in on this application, they specifically called out their pleasure with the current ownership and how the property has been cleaned up. This is a photo of the second parcel that's contained in the CUP area. This is the the adjacent tax parcel to the, I guess, in the CUP area, this would be the area that is on the western portion after it goes through that kind of bottleneck there. The area to the north and to the east would be the parcel that contains the schoolhouse. The area to the west would be primarily an agricultural tax parcel. It does have a dwelling and several ag buildings on it, but then a lot of cropland, some of which is currently planted into grapes, as we've seen on this photo. There are no structures proposed on this tax parcel for this use. The use would be primarily, as I understand it, to grow the grapes, but also to allow their guests to enjoy the vineyard. So there might be some activities that take place in the actual area where the grapes are grown. Looking at soils here, this is just for informational purposes for what they're proposing. And they're not proposing any dwellings, so there are no soil regulations that control from the zoning ordinance. But we'll give you some information on soils here anyhow. There's a lot of soils mapped in this CUP area, and there are no mapped water features. I think if you recall, in your staff reports, talked about some hydroic soils that happened to be mapped in there. Those maps are not always entirely accurate. Based on my site visit, it appeared that there was a depression landscape to the north of the proposed area, but I did not witness that within the soil area. However, I'm not a soil scientist. Here's a picture from two thousand and ten. This is prior to the current, the applicant's ownership under the old ownership. This is a picture that was in the file resulting from a compliance action that was taken against the prior owners. From a review of the file, it appears that the county was involved with prior owners for twenty to thirty years, working on clean up the various items that were stored exterior. This is looking off the county road, and you'll see that the town hall is actually the immediate neighbor of the existing school. As I said earlier, the town board supported this application, and we've not received any comments from the public. So recommendations. As always, the committee should consider all materials and testimony before making findings that support their decision. This is where we'll do that little bit of work. I'll try to foster a discussion about the ordinance pathways, but that would be the appropriate thing to do in this case. Staff analysis provided guidance for drafted drafting findings, and the county attorney's office has prepared draft findings for your consideration. And then should you move to recommend, the county attorney's office has also proposed conditions for your consideration. So if we could spend a moment to have a conversation about the ordinance pathways. You know, there's no right or wrong answer in this case. It would be any one of those could work. All three of those could work. It's really the preference of the board. The one piece of information that would be useful in in making that or approaching the the decision might be that, let's just say they're granted under all three of those. And let's say five years from now, the ordinance has changed, and one of those is no longer included. Because that use is no longer in the ordinance, now you're dealing with a non-conforming use. So the fewer the fewer pathways or the fewer citations that you feel are appropriate, probably the better. Anyone have any thoughts on? Let's start with the first one, agricultural oriented business. I think they cited this because their grapes are an agriculture commodity, and they're looking to utilize grapes to make this work.
I guess I would say if the petitioners requested or asked that all three of them be included on it, they must have pretty good reason for wanting all three on there. Obviously, the obviously one is the wine tasting one, and then agriculture oriented business.
For sure, Mike.
Well, my thought is the first one, if they're going to put in a vineyard, not only they probably want to produce wine, but you have to process the grapes. That's not the tasting facility. That's a different place. And that to me would be the the first one. Agricultural orientation of business, such as okay, sure. The second one. I see the wine tasting, but also when I read through it, they want to have some type of event center.
Yes.
And I don't know if that would fall in the first one or the wine tasting. I think that seems separate. So does the middle one allow that possibility more of a chance to happen?
I think that if if the committee is is seeing that it is something that's similar to the other uses that you're familiar with in the ordinance, then it would.
Would be needed or wouldn't be?
Oh, oh, I see. I misunderstood your question. So you're saying because the the wedding component of the application doesn't fit.
The first agricultural orientation.
Right.
It could be weddings, but it could be a meeting. It could be.
Yeah.
A bunch. It could be some seed court company wants to have something for your farmers.
Yeah, I think that's a valid astute perception of that there. If it did, if the weddings were to fit in any of the others, it would need to be incidental to the primary use that you're approving. So if you're saying it will be a wine tasting facility, and we view that incidental to this, they're going to do some weddings. Then I think you've got a, you can make the case that that could fly, but it might be cleaner. It might be more reasonable to take the approach that you're suggesting. That would be that weddings and other types of events don't fit nicely in either of the other two, so therefore they justify inclusion of that middle option.
That's correct.
Mr. Chair and members of the board, this is Alex Tillman with the county attorney's office. I'm here on Zoom. If you can all hear, I would I would just ask that you guys all take a look at what's in the draft findings of fact. I presented some findings for you that I think addresses this issue.
You know what page you're referring to? You know what page you're referring to, Alex? There's a lot of verbiage here.
It's in the draft findings of fact, it's the should be the first page of findings.
The first section of finding.
The air seat district includes our business.
Okay, I do have a question. We we've permitted something similar to this. I'm thinking of and I don't remember all the real details. Loomans out north of Lewiston, they've got and they've got an event center. I think, what did we, what's our history? How did we do all of that? And I know you weren't here, Aaron.
Similar.
Where we adapted all three, allow them to do.
We did have one in Whitewater.
Mm-hmm. Couple.
Also some sampling, microbrewery cider.
Right. Yeah, but I think I'm thinking of wedding and the wine tasting and everything all rolled into one more.
There's one over on Apple Blossom Drive too, right?
Yeah, not as, I don't know if they intend to have like, pardon, yeah. Yeah, there's one up on, but I don't know if they ever designed to have like four hundred and ninety-nine people. I think the size might be smaller.
Well, yeah, I think that one is smaller, but it's the same principle.
Right, but I don't think it's more of any, it's more wine tasting and wine versus an event. I guess when I say event center, I see, you know, the weddings with several hundred people. That kind of changes a little bit.
Are you referring to garbage?
No, not that one. There's one over on on closer.
Deep to the.
I I can. Yeah, yeah, it's up on the.
Well, if it doesn't, it's not apples to grapes, sorry. We got to go back to what they want.
Right.
What somebody else wants.
Yes, but we set precedence if I just how we did the lumens and what we used.
I don't think they ever built their center though, but they probably asked for it.
Yeah, I think so. I think you're right.
But I don't think it's built yet.
I, yeah.
But the process is the same.
Same.
They're going to phase it. I understand they're going to phase this in.
Absolutely.
And I want to make conditional use.
Easy.
Allowing them the best ability to do what they choose to do.
Yep.
And whether it's through conditions or through figuring out how many pathways you need to go through or what in the ordinance.
Yeah, and I don't think that this necessarily affects, you know, how they do what they're proposing to do. That's kind of limited by what they what they put in their application and what they'll tell you here tonight. This really has to do with, you know, if the ordinance has changed in the future, how does that affect it? From a zoning staff analysis standpoint, if it were simply the other uses, it has the least potential to be affected by a future ordinance amendment because it's the least number of citations.
May I make a a quick, a quick point? If the ordinance were to be changed in the future, it wouldn't affect this because this would be grandfathered in because the CUP would run with the land. So I don't think we need to be too concerned about if the ordinance changes in the future because this will still be operable as long as they're maintaining all commission, all the conditions. That's why the way that it's drafted in the findings is we're permitting it as all of them together as a blend because it would fit under the catch-all exception. Which is in ten, section ten four six twenty-seven, the one that's similar to other conditional uses. So that that would be my input on on this discussion.
All right. Does anyone have any questions for Aaron?
We back up one slide. We had the townhouse and the old school.
Here we go.
Different shaped townhome.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think picture doesn't do justice.
No building.
It's not leaning that way.
I don't hit it. It's not leaning. It's sitting right.
I don't think the brick shifted. Some of it fell off, but.
Well, yeah.
There is another, I think earlier, there's another.
Is there any, is there any historical declaration on this building?
Not that I'm aware of.
Good. That's a good thing.
Anyone else have any questions for Aaron? Okay. Oh, Louis got one.
On page twenty-five, I believe it says that it allows the petitioners to develop and operate a fine winery in agricultural conservation, if it concerns Charles Township, I believe that could be Fremont.
Oh, yes.
Because I haven't lived in sixty years. I'm still a Fremont.
I think on that note, since you got that page open and Alex can jump in too, I just want to go over the fact that there needs to be a reconciliation of the conditions too, just so what you ultimately do reflects what it is. The November staff report recommends eight conditions, and that runs on from page twenty to twenty-one in the packet. However, after legal review and from the county attorney's office, Alex, in his findings of fact, has recommended the eight conditions, but they're not verbatim compared to what you would see in the staff report. So I just wanted to point that out and make sure that whatever is done, whatever motion is that the conditions are reconciled to reflect the accurate.
You're saying we can pick one or the other or combine the two?
Well, I think the intent was Alex, I think wordsmith and crafted the ones in their findings. And I just reviewed, they they kind of are put in different categories a little bit, but I believe they were modeled to resemble similar conditions that in similar language that we have used on previous conditional use permits for consistency. That's kind of my take with it.
Great. Any other questions for Aaron?
I don't know that I answered your question, sir, but I I did you repeat it? Or what did Eric answer?
Well, my question was is here is to correct from St. Charles Township to Fremont Township on page twenty-five.
Oh, sure. Yes, you you are correct. It should be Fremont Township.
Yeah, as I said, I've lived there for sixty years.
You ought to know, yes.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you.
I thank you.
Petitioners, please get up and say your name and address and tell us the story that you want to say.
All right. My name is Jill Bear. We actually currently live elsewhere. Do you want where we reside or the property?
Where you live right now.
One seven three two six three hundred eighty street in Montgomery, Minnesota. And you want to hear our story? So we are hoping, as you've seen, to turn this property into a farm winery. Kevin's parents own the farm agricultural land that they have talked to that connects through to this property. We would love to be able to be a part of that family farm and to continue it in its current state. It is not able to financially support more than one family. And so one of the ways that we have decided would be good and that we're excited about would be the farm winery. We think it would be a great asset for the community, for the county, and to bring more tax base into it as well as just a great place to bring people together. As you've seen by one of the pictures, when we actually acquired the property, it was way worse than the photos that you've seen. So we have already spent thousands of dollars and and hundreds of hours cleaning the property up. And we have a lot more work to go, as you can see. That's part of why this would be a multi-phase project. In a perfect world, it would all happen in a line, and you know, we did ask for up to five hundred people, I think, because at this point, we we would be grateful if we could ever get to that point. But we were also advised to ask for the maximum that you could think of because we don't want to have to come back and and do this again and again and again. And hopefully someday our children will be taking care of this property and expanding it as they go. So we do have the two acres planted. I think in the notes, it says that we would go up to forty acres someday. It is a very laborious crop, and it is a labor of love. You have to enjoy it, and it takes a lot of time, which is why we would never seek going more than forty, and even forty would be a lot. So as far as the wedding and event center, we're not looking for crazy parties or, you know, mass music festivals. This would be family gatherings, which sometimes do get a little bit crazy. But it wouldn't be anything. You know, like I said, crazy music festivals or anything like that. So not, I'm not sure what questions you all have. This is the first time we've been presenting this information, so.
Hey. Hey, Eugene.
If you would get expanded or developed to forty acres, does that, this acreage that's we've been showing on the screen here, that isn't that many? So is that legal on the farm land without it being included in the CUP? Okay, that's fine.
Louis.
If you're going to have five hundred people, where are you going to have all the parking spots? Have you thought about that one?
Yes.
Because I'm living in the greater suburbs of Fremont.
Yes, so the are the property or parcel that we own is just under six acres. And so there's a lot of land to work for there. We have proposed that there will be one parking spot for every three seats in the tasting facility, one for every four at the wedding site, with also an additional overflow parking that would be a grassy unpaved area for when those wedding events are occurring or maybe during fall when harvest season is there and people like to come out even more to be a part of that. So we do have ample space and will continue to keep that set open for parking, and there would never be a need for any on-street parking.
Okay, Marcia.
Well, you know, you've got the school, so you're going to build some more, you're actually going to process your own grapes or are you going to? Okay, so you will be building
Yes.
in relationship to this old schoolhouse. Will it be further inland away from the roads? Okay, I I don't remember seeing the picture, but I'm sure so. Yeah, okay. And then so what do you have currently for water and sewer except it?
We do not.
Okay, there is nothing there, so that will.
There's the old stuff from the school, but that hasn't been used since the sixties, so I think it's safe to assume we'll be starting from scratch with all of that.
So you'll have another major investment in water and sewer. And I don't know if staff, if this is a question for staff or not. So I know we have fire marshals in this, you know, organizational. You need so many square feet for each person. I mean, is is the structure capable of holding four hundred and ninety-nine people with the
It would be.
Fire marshal's approval?
It would be multiple structures to get to that four hundred and ninety-nine. There would never be one building that would have.
It would be on property at one time, on the whole six acres, not in that building.
You would have to at some point in time have a fire marshal
Yes.
give you approval.
And all of this, if we're allowed to move forward, has to get a state approval for any kind of facility that's going to be manufacturing and selling alcohol as well as a federal. So before we can even start to break ground on anything, that would all need to go through and fit all of their guidelines as well.
Okay, thank you.
Louis.
One other question. Have you worked anybody with the town board about getting any alcohol permits? I believe Fremont Township is a dry township, and you'll have to get the license for selling or tasting or whatever for that. It starts on the township level, I believe. Are you aware of that?
No, they did not say anything about that when we just asked to move forward.
I remember years ago when Dog, they wanted an on-sale liquor license, they had to go through a go through the township. You might want to check into that before you go too far.
Yeah, we definitely will.
I don't think too much hasn't seen on the town board or for that.
Sure. Thank you for that information.
Any other questions for the petitioners? If not, the the highway it's on, that's a blacktop road, correct?
Yes.
That's good because motorcycles and convertibles don't like. So if no one else has any questions, no. Okay, if no one else has any questions, you can sit down for now.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Eugene.
I'm moving to open a public hearing.
I'll second that.
Eugene moved to open the public hearing and Jordan seconded. All in favor of opening the public hearing, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. The public hearing is now open. So anyone who wishes to speak for or against this petition, please step forward, state your name and address and what you would like to say. Anne, are you watching the interweb there? No one's hollering at us there. All right. Anyone wishes to speak for or against a petition, please step forward, state your name and address and what you'd like to say.
B is talking. You can see the mic going, but we can't hear him. Every time you talk, Mark, our our green mic goes on, and then when you ask, see, his screen. You can hear us, we can't hear you.
Are they muted? Can you tell by what year?
Doesn't look like it.
No, if it's green, it should be on, but we've had technology problems in this room. I have it.
His light is flashing, but I don't know what that means. His light is flashing, but I don't know what that means.
Can I make a call?
I've had it from my house. Where it
Could use the phone and just call us too.
Is there a chat box? There is a chat. Can he access the chat?
Who's chatting?
Is there something there? Oh, that's from Alex.
Yeah, after the meeting, we look at the chat. Yeah, I guess. Well, I don't know what to do here. Because, yeah. Mr. County Attorney, what do you think? It looks like some bee is trying to talk, but we can't hear him.
Oh, this is not legally related, but are we sure that's not like a duplicate camera or microphone for the boardroom?
Not a clue.
Oh, no.
I think that if you, you know, they've been given a reasonable opportunity to either use the chat function, call in or attempt to speak. We don't have to indefinitely delay. So I, I believe efforts have been made and this would be sufficient. Of course, if you want to, if you want to give them a little bit longer, if we could.
Well, you gotta announce it once more.
Yep, I gotta announce it once more. B, if you're there and paying attention, send us a chat real quick. I have no idea.
I don't know if they can hear us, but I guess they can. They're trying to talk now.
Try to bring it up.
Yeah. All right, for the third and final time, if anyone wishes to speak for or against the petitions, speak now or forever hold your peace.
Or come to the county board.
Or come to the county board meeting on Friday night at nine AM. Okay. They've had their notice.
I move that we close the public hearing.
Okay, Eugene made the motion to close the public hearing and Louis seconded. All in favor of closing the public hearing, say aye.
Aye.
Public hearing is now closed. All right, so we have a few things to consider. One is the number of Yeah, ordinances to look at. Which I personally would just say leave all three of them on there. I, I don't see a problem with leaving all three of them on there. That's what the petitioners want. I think that's the best rounded way of doing it, but that's just me talking. What do you think, Eugene?
Well, I think we should leave all three too, because if it gets passed by the county board, then they're all three grandfathered in, so they can write a court in ordinance, so hell freezes over and it's still their grandfathered in.
I understand.
I think it gives them the most flexibility, so I support all, leaving all three in. You already know my opinion.
Yeah, anyone else have thoughts to the other? Okay, well, it's pretty much.
Do we have to have a motion for that or?
Well, do, one of the questions, do any of the ordinances restrict them? I was trying to pull up, I apologize at home, I didn't, the wine tasting. Is there any restrict, anything in either of these that restricts them doing what they want to do?
Aaron?
I, I don't think so, but I'm just asking because I didn't get the wine tasting pulled up here.
I, I'm not aware of any restrictions related to the wine tasting.
Okay. Because I know at times we had, well, we had hours of operation and, and, you know, things like that. So I, you know, we're not not putting any of that in here.
Let me see that. I, I was going to ask on that because I didn't understand.
Yeah, we usually, you know, because it is, it is a business in an agricultural community. And again, I think in the past we have put hours of operation.
It is an hour. So Aaron, can you make kind of?
I don't know. We need to do that or?
Sure. So in the applicant's application, they state some hours and some days. The way that our conditions are worded would bind them to what they say in their application, so they wouldn't be operating without any limitations on hours or days.
Also, Mr. Chair, if they're serving alcohol, there's a limitation on how late they can be there.
The state and the fed.
State and local.
Page thirty-six, the last part of their general comments.
Last part. You know, but I always thought we put it in our, in the.
Yeah, but it's different, it's different between all the different things they want to do, you know, they, they talk about if there's a wedding, how late that'll go. The, the wine tastings are different. I know. And the wedding's all season. But doesn't sound like the wine tasting will be.
Okay, what about the findings of fact? I'll do straighten that out.
Can I, can I address that too?
Yeah.
So I, I guess I'm not, I wrote the ones from the zoning office and I'm not here advocating in any way that you should adopt the ones I wrote and not the ones the county attorney's office wrote. I think we were just pointing out that there's two sets out there to make you aware of it. But I think generally you're considering the ones that come from the attorney's office, not from zoning staff. So if that in any way affects how you approach it.
Is this one in our, is that the county attorney's? Or?
In the findings of fact document that the county attorney's office provides, the conditions are included at, at the end.
Page twenty-five and twenty-six are the county attorney's version and his are page twenty-three and twenty-four.
I don't see, oh, there's the conditions. They don't mention the ordinances and the conditions. They have page twenty-three is the attorney's recommendation.
I even liked the way he worded it, farm winery and event space and specified.
I move that we utilize the findings of facts and the conditions on page twenty-three through whatever, twenty-six. And our packet.
Is my correction included then?
Is this correction included?
Yeah.
And it's only in there one time where they.
We've already changed it to Fremont Township, if that's what you guys are asking. Yeah, we're, that'll be in the, the final one that gets signed. We've, we've made that change.
So we have a motion.
I second Eugene's motion.
We have a motion, a second, to accept the findings of fact from the attorney on page twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty-five, and the conditions and twenty-six. Any discussion?
Yeah, I got a question. So normally when we do buildings, there's like, it specifically calls out the septic permit and things such as that. Is that covered by the fourth condition? Or do we need to specifically say anything about that?
Well, and going along with that.
I guess I'll answer and then maybe Alex will chime in too, but anyone building a structure anywhere in the county is under the Winona County ordinance, which requires permits for buildings and for septics. So it's still.
Wouldn't be necessary to add.
Well, with going with that, we usually, and I, I know this is a ten-year project, but we usually have somewhat of a footprint of what these other buildings might be. So will that, how will they meet any setbacks or, because I think there's, I think I read somewhere there's a feedlot in the, in the neighborhood and how will they comply with all those?
Good, good question. It would be the board's purview to put heightened conditions on if you, if you felt they were necessary. Barring that, the standard setbacks that apply under the county ordinance would control. In this case, they, they do provide a preliminary site map. And we did provide that in your packets to show approximate locations of future buildings. The conditions that Alex has drafted for you and that you're preparing to, to vote on do also allow for some incidental changes that are in line with what you're approving tonight to be done without the need for them to return to you and ask, can we put the building, you know, ten feet that way or ten feet that way? Your question about feedlots, there's a requirement for dwellings to be set back from feedlots in the county ordinance, but that's the only type of structure.
They would be a thousand, I think I've seen a thousand feet. They would be a thousand feet.
Well, they're not proposing any dwellings, so there would be no applicable setback.
Well, this has dwellings and they're accessory. I mean, I don't want to impede them, but I don't want to impede the feedlot either by allowing some of them.
Sure, sure. I guess the analysis.
Feedlot is your feedlot too, right?
Yeah.
It's in the trust.
Additionally, everyone, generally for a, a setback from a very, from a setback from an official control, that would be a variance, I, I believe, rather than a conditional use. So they would have to go through that process if they wanted to kind of encroach on any of the setbacks.
I don't want them to have to get a variance.
So you, you could, you could heighten them, I suppose. You could say they need more of a, of a setback, but it was my view when I.
I, I, I'm trying to reduce barriers.
Sure.
But I don't want to impede anybody that's a neighbor to do what, you know, they want to do with their properties too.
Yeah.
But that may change too, you know?
It, it was my analysis that these were not residential or accessory to residential buildings, so there would be no applicable setback.
Okay, all right.
All right, we have a mo, more discussion.
I just wanted to say this is unique. I know of one in Good Hugh County. It's out in the middle where agri, because that's where you raise grapes, twenty acres. It's in Flower Valley. I don't know the township. I think Florence. And I have been at wedding events twice there. And it's the summer and it wonderful. It went great. And it's a fairly modern facility. They also, if you travel, the vineyard tasting thing is really kind of spinning off as a good cottage industry. Probably isn't the right word for it. But if you go across the river, you see them all up and down the river. And I've raised grapes, so I know what you're going through, okay? And it's very labor intensive. So they're gonna put their heart and soul in this. Now, again, I don't have any problem with an event out in a rural area. This is not a dwelling. I know we went through how, what they've cleaned up and they've done a marvelous job. Because I've seen it when I, I walked through it once, the old way, okay? I think the schoolhouse is a theme for you, right? I think a lot of your ancestors went to that school. From nineteen twenty on, I bet. So they have personal thing about that too. And it'll be a challenge to restore, but it might be a theme to their winery. You know, I don't know if it'll be Fremont Schoolhouse Wine or whatever their theme is, but you have to be creative on that.
Louis said it was a dry township. We have to be careful.
And that too, I know there's hurdles there, but we're here for land use. And, you know, I'm sure they're doing a lot of research and I speak in favor of it. I just don't see where it takes anything away from our county. In fact, they're bringing business to our county. And our county residents hopefully will be utilizing this. So I speak in favor of it.
Any other discussion?
You want me to say in favor of it? Yeah, why not? Ben Center in Freeman out in the middle of nowhere, yeah. What would really be nice is if we had a decent supper, supper club someplace.
All right. There's a motion and a second to accept, but now it was for the findings of fact and conditions or was it to approve to include them? What was your motion?
No, it was just for the findings. So we, we need, we need to have a motion to approve the whole thing.
This is just for the findings in fact and conditions. And because we're using the one the lawyer wrote from page twenty-three to including twenty-six, everything in between that. That's what we're voting on right now. Any other discussion on that? Seeing none, all in favor of approving using the finding fact and conditions from page twenty-three in our thing to page twenty-six, say aye. Aye. Those opposed, say nay. The motion passed. We are using the findings of fact as amended or whatever, so that he said they already changed it to Fremont Township, so we should be good. Now back to the discussion about the whole thing.
I make a motion to approve, second.
Hey, Mike made the motion to approve and Louis seconded. Any discussion? I know on weekends, that's what we do is we drive around because I've been to probably every winery around here. Problem is, most of them are in Wisconsin. Up and down. Yeah, 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 we've been on them too. So I'm looking forward to, hopefully you get it going. Okay, there's a motion and a second to approve to allow them to build what they want to build out there. All in favor of the motion, say aye. Aye. Those opposed, say nay. All right, you've been approved to start your journey. Your next hurdle is Tuesday, January ninth at nine AM when the county commissioners meet in this room, correct? This room. And they will take it under advisement. We're just the advisory board and sometimes they listen to us. So you may want to be here to answer any questions they may have. If not, good luck with your good luck with your proposal and make sure it's on the blacktop because I got a convertible I drive around. Into a few, but you know, you gotta wash the car after. All righty, Jordan.
How do you get off your farm? Too many gravel road on your farm?
Well, driveway, it's slow.
So it does work.
Put the top down until it gets on.
Oh, let's down before it. Jordan, so the Board of Adjustments.
Yeah, we didn't have a Board of Adjustment meeting today, but the last time, well, last month, we didn't have this meeting and we had a Board of Adjustment meeting. We had two petitions for septic variances. One being in Dakota, of course, and the other was in Nodine and we approved both of those. Our new Hartford Township, but Nodine.
All righty. Um, Eric, he's got a couple of things for us today.
My distinct pleasure to honor Mark for his six years of service for the Planning Commission, so we will miss that. We have a a brief letter I'd like to read into the record. Dear Mark Clark, thank you for your time and commitment while serving on the Planning Commission. Working through the details of petitions such as conditional and interim use permits, zoning ordinance amendments and other zoning related issues in order to provide sound recommendations to the Winona County Board is both difficult and challenging. Your work has provided a valuable service to the citizenry of Winona County. Board service is one of the toughest volunteer roles of all and you performed, performed with dedication and tenacity. Your skill in handling the Planning Commission meeting at chair was especially appreciated with appreciation the County Planning Department.
We should all sign that. Can we all sign? Okay, pass it around. Everybody should sign.
someday you might become famous and I could sell it on eBay.
I might.
On a second note, a little bit more somber, and Alex, I guess, stopped me in my tracks if I'm, I'm not stating something correct. In regards to the Nodine, Hemp Hill, Zenki Cell Tower, we did receive notice of a challenge and appeal. So at this point, I would ask, the county has advised not to discuss that case whatsoever. That will be now sorted out through legal channels and through the county attorney's office. So that includes I guess any parties asking or any information whatsoever. So that's where we stand with that. Is there anything you wanted to maybe add to that, Alex?
I'll just kind of echo that. So we, that we received a complaint. It's, we're being sued in, the county's being sued in federal court. I would just advise everyone that if you're going to discuss this, discuss it either with myself or any attorney that gets appointed. Um, that if you're going to discuss this, discuss it either with myself or any attorney that gets appointed to work on the matter. And that we have an ongoing duty, uh, under the federal rules of civil procedure to preserve any potential evidence that might be relevant in that case. Which include any written discussions you may have had about this. And furthermore, any other communications you have going on from now. Regarding that case could be subject to discovery and disclosure. So. It's my little lawyer tidbit for everyone. Uh, we will continue to advise. Planning commission about how this goes when we can and, uh. We'll see where it goes.
Who appealed it?
Um, through the, yeah, yeah. Other than that, I don't want to speculate on anything.
Curious, yeah. Just talk to Alex.
That's right. All questions, comments, concerns, county attorney's office. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Or if the, yeah, or if the media.
Anything else to be brought forth at this meeting?
Make a motion to.
Eugene. Uh. As you and I were discussing before this meeting was officially called to order. Um. It's kind of nerve wracking for us and all people involved that we don't have a planning director. But. I would like to emphasize that. One of the biggest reasons that we are having all these problems with planning and zoning is we are. Very critically underfunded for this department. And we have to get. The county and the county commissioners and all people involved to realize that this is a many faceted problem. And it had better be looked at because it's causing and can cause. Bigger and more serious problems. So.
To address that, we have posted the position several times and had very limited applicants. That's.
Well, I realize that part.
So we are aggressively trying to, but we need, you know, the right type of person also.
But.
We're not going to take a warm body.
Our former planning and zoning administrator, K.
Yes.
He said that the funding for this department is. Way less than half of what's necessary to make it, get all of.
Don't know what you mean by funding. You mean sta, staff?
No, 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 no. For all, all of it. I mean, for staff and for all the parts.
She put the budget together. I mean, she was in control of her own dollars, so I'm not sure how to address that concern and we never. And I'm sorry, we never cut anything that was put on in a budget. Seriously.
Well, that isn't what she told me, but.
All right, well, and she's not here anymore, but I mean, all department heads create their own budget. And then it goes into the total package and, yeah, the county board doesn't really micromanage any of those budgets. And has never really cut anything of any consequence out of anybody's budget.
What I've read years and years ago, Mark, is that. We are one of the largest counties in the state with the smallest population. So we're one of the least funded. Geographically speaking. That's just the way the ball.
Well, yeah, that's part of the problem. The state does not give us money like they should.
Just a quick question. I thought about it. Last couple of weeks. Is there any way, because what we're asking this director to do is economic, I mean, there's so many.
There's too many. Okay.
Too, too many, too many balls that they have to juggle. Is there a way to take some of the things away and make this job more focused?
I, I think so, but unfortunately or fortunately to Kay Qualley's credit, she took on a lot of that. Um, and, you know, and, and it was some of her passion. Um, could it be scaled back?
Yeah, that's what I'm wondering from a board's perspective, if they could re.
Now that we have a, a, you know, we hired the assistant county administrator, HR person, I'm hoping that that person, once they get their feet more on the ground, they've only been here, what? A few months, that they could take over some of those responsibilities. Yeah.
Mark, uh, I think in. Also, part of this discussion is K was told that she should take on these responsibilities.
And that was more from administration than it was.
Right. I, I don't, not saying that it was the county board or anything, but she, she was pretty strongly advised. That she should do those things. And that's one of the reasons she left is because it was more stress than she wanted.
So if you know any good planners or anything, send them our way. Because like I say, we're, we're, we've been trying, but just haven't. The, and that's not just planning, it's any of our positions. The number of applicants compared to a few years ago is greatly reduced. And then to get qualified applicants for any of our jobs is getting to be a bigger and bigger challenge. And then with QuickTrip in La Crosse, you heard them, they're going to do what, a hundred and fifty million dollar expansion? Uh, Mayo's doing a what, five billion dollar expansion? You know where our workforce goes? You know, where the, you know? Sometimes it's difficult.
Where the money is.
Yeah, it's, it is difficult.
Anything else to be brought forth at this meeting?
I'm ultimately adjourned.
Eugene made the motion to adjourn. Lynn seconded. I heard her say something.
I said, see you next year.
And we have, we have a few treats here for everybody in honor of Mark Clark.
A few treats. The meeting is adjourned. Thank you.
Oh, here, Mark.
Get some treats. We had peppermint bark.